You know, for youth program, helping with middle school. And then to kind of coordinate with Dudley, our varsity coach. And just coordinate throughout the whole program to make sure we're kind of all on the same page. And make sure if anybody needs anything, we, we get them that. But that's, that's what I do this year. And obviously, this is an interesting year. So just that I go through kind of the different pieces. So first of all, K through six. We do an intro to wrestling, which we do after school with community ed. It's typically in November, which obviously was canceled this year. But that is just a chance for, for $5. Kids can go to three different wrestling sessions. And then we started something new last year where we actually had a tournament on the final night. So parents could come watch what their kids have learned in just three practices. It was wildly successful, I would say. But that just gives the kids a chance to figure out if they want to enroll in the MatRats program. The MatRats program runs from November to April. So it is probably one of the longest sports seasons there are. And most wrestlers will actually wrestle 12 months of the year with different styles of wrestling. And our, our kids, we do a number of tournaments throughout the year. Two of which are at home here. And then they go to a number of wrestling tournaments around the state. The two state wrestling tournaments are actually in Rochester. One is called the MinUSA Wrestling, which is part of USA Wrestling. And one is called NYWA, which is Northland Youth Wrestling Association. And so that's, we typically will have anywhere from 40 to 60 kids in that K through six program. Middle school wrestling is, well, Minnesota is a little unique in wrestling where as a seventh grader, you can start varsity wrestling. And so a lot of schools don't have middle school wrestling. We were one of those schools who didn't have middle school. And so the MatRats kind of came to the school and said, hey, if we sponsor the coach, can we do a middle school wrestling program? And so we do, we do sponsor the middle school coach every year. And then we also do some strength training with the middle schoolers as well. And so that is middle school is sixth through eighth grade. That has to be according to MS HSL rules. They cannot be wrestling with the varsity wrestlers. It has to be an independent practice. And it was a, it was a fantastic program, obviously, this year is a little bit different. But they'll go to typically meets every week, sometimes twice a week. And the cool thing about middle school wrestling is, you know, sometimes if you're a seventh grader and you're either going to wrestle varsity or junior varsity. As a seventh grader, you might not be ready for that. And even as an eighth grader. So gives those kids an opportunity to go get some matches with other similar kids, similar age, weight and abilities. So it's a middle school, actually, two years ago, had our largest population of girls. We had three girls in the middle school wrestling program. And there are about two girls in our K through six program. Girls wrestling is the fastest growing sport in Minnesota. So that's something new that you maybe didn't know. With high school wrestling, obviously, we do a number of things, almost anything that they need as far as Dudley is concerned, from, you know, senior posters and going, if we were going to go to an away tournament, an overnight tournament, obviously, we would help sponsor that. Biggest thing we do here is, is buy wrestling mats. So, you know, wrestling mats are obviously not cheap. They cost anywhere from 12 to, well, 20 grand. And so just about a year and a half ago, we just bought our last wrestling mat. So Cannon Falls has eight wrestling mats. And so typically in the past, we've purchased a number of those. So whenever we raise enough money and, and whenever we need a new wrestling mat, that usually is, we're going to donate the money to the school and then the school.
I don't know my phone. No, I can't work. I don't, I think if I go back to my Word document, I'll lose this. Oh, well.
No, you can still do Word and listen.
We'll need to see if we can shut down that audio for someone there, please.
Okay, so I'll just continue. The thing we're working on right now is a mat lifter. So we're working with the, the school to put in a second mat lift in the field house. And so, you know, we've been working with the custodial or maintenance staff and on that. And, and, you know, right now, I think one of the, one of the biggest things that probably drives the maintenance staff crazy is, you know, wrestling mats are obviously big. And we can hoist two of them up in the field house. And four of them go in the wrestling room. So that leaves us a spot for two wrestling mats to go somewhere. And so over the years, they've gone a lot of different places. And so right now, we're just working on raising the money to buy a secondary mat lifter that'll raise a couple more wrestling mats so they get out of the way. So we raise all of our money through tournaments. We typically run our tournaments the same weekend as the high school tournaments. So high school runs two separate tournaments. One is in usually around Super Bowl Sunday. And one is a little bit later, like first week in February. So we typically will use those at the same time. So once we set up the wrestling mats in the field house, we only have to do it once. And then we, the high school holds tournaments on Saturdays, we run ours on Sundays. So that's our major, the way we raise money is concession stand and entry into our tournaments. And then we do also run a Greco freestyle tournament, which is about usually around Easter weekend. The goal of the program is to keep costs low for, you know, especially our K through six program, to get kids interested in the sport. So, you know, today we run it through community ed. And so typically you can join wrestling for less than 50 bucks. And we even have scholarships available for that. So we have a number of Cannon Falls alumni who, if someone can't find the money to join wrestling, they will pay for it, no questions asked. And then we, the, the sport is pretty easy to get into. You basically need a pair of tennis shoes and some headgear, which costs 15 to $20. So it's a pretty cheap sport to get into. I'd say probably one of the cheapest, which makes it a little bit good for parents too. So. And then, you know, just talking about wrestling, goal we have for the kids is to, you know, number one, learn self-discipline, they'll learn how to win. They'll certainly learn how to lose. And we like that, we want them to be good sports. We talk a lot about sportsmanship and then just to be good citizens. So we talked to our K through six kids about, you know, if you see an elderly woman walking out of the grocery store, you carry the groceries for her and you say, yes ma'am, no ma'am, open the door, things like that. So we try to teach them more than just wrestling. So certainly can talk about any COVID response. I know everything's kind of on hold right now. But wrestling is the only sport that I know of that's used to doing medical checks. Because obviously, we do medical checks every day. And so, you know, when we started, first started researching COVID response, to be honest, for wrestlers, that's easy because we, that's what we do every day anyway. We'd have, obviously have to change our response a little bit, but we're used to doing medical checks. You know, we have doctors on site when we do tournaments and, and skin checks and all that stuff. So we're, we're used to doing some of that stuff. But it can certainly take any questions or expand on anything that you like.
I don't know if you addressed how many members, booster club members that you have. Would you know that number?
So we're run by a nine-member board. But everyone who is K through 12 technically has access to our program. So that would probably be 100, if I took a guess.
Any questions for Jeremy in regard to the program? Jeremy, you're kind of our lead dog on this process. So everybody's probably listening in to see just what's going on and what we're asking of you. But it's kind of a meet and greet, actually. It's been a while. So one more time, anybody have any questions for Jeremy concerning the MatRats pro booster program? Okay, if not, thank you for your time. Thank you for information. Reed, anything to add there?
No, thank you, Jeremy. That helped a lot.
Very good. Thanks, Jeremy.
Great information, thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Okay, moving forward, public input. Due to data privacy concerns, a speaker may not address criticism toward an individual district employee during public input. Essentially, we have three to five minutes to discuss anything that, that anyone in the public feels germane to the district, any concerns that they have without officially naming names, I guess. Would anyone like to speak to the board in regard to this? Okay, moving on, consideration to approve the finance report. I'll hand that over, Mr. Davison.
Sure. So we kind of had or been on the docket to plan for having the audit presentation today. And unfortunately, their office hit with some COVID-related issues and some staffing issues. So I'll let me push back until the December meeting. We'll have more information at that point and more details. In the meantime, as a draft becomes available, we will probably meet with myself and Superintendent Sampson and just kind of discuss the draft with Schmitz Schaefer prior to coming to the board with the actual presentation at the December meeting. We do have until December 30th to get that turned in, so we'll be okay. Just kind of putting it down towards the, the wire. But it's kind of is the time we're in right now too. They were hit with some COVID issues as well. So apologize for not having that ready for this board meeting, but we'll go through the financial report as presented. At the top is just the cash balance as of the day we send out the agenda, about 2.4 million. And some things to note there is you'll see that first number in the revenue column on the left side, the ideas payment, normally that number is anywhere between 5 to $800,000. This month is one where we received tax receipts from both Goodyear and Dakota County. And ideas, they kind of metered out their cash flow accordingly as well. So they reduce their payments as the county payments come in. So it's just kind of an offset. So if that number were to look low, it is, but it is offset with Goodyear County and Dakota County tax receipts. And then the other kind of big thing to note on this report anyway, is at the bottom in the payments, you'll see debt service payments go out at that February 1st. Those are the amounts for refunding bonds on the field house and auditorium and remodel that we did 10 years ago. And then there's also, so some of the LTFM project that we had done. When those debt payments go out, you'll see that the cash flow is significantly affected. Well, 1.6, 1.64 million dollars of it will go out to make those payments at that time. So you kind of see that while we're doing well with cash, a lot of it is serviced by the debt services that we have. That being said, we do stay positive with cash and we are good throughout the entire fiscal year in terms of cash and making our obligations. Maybe a little thinner than, you know, we would like, but definitely not in need of having to do any anticipation borrowing. And that's what we've got presented for tonight. So if you have any questions, I'm certainly doing my best to answer anything you have.
When we have these, these 2017 A, B and 2016 A, is there a time that we, we look at refinancing to a lower rate? Or is that something that we've done in the past and we won't be doing in the future?
Yeah, so the 27, sorry, 2017 A and B, those are refunded bonds. They're the original debt for the field house and the auditorium. We did refund those in 2017 and got a significant rate decrease, which ends up being a savings to the taxpayer in the amount of levy collected for that debt. We work with others real closely on when it's cost-effective for us to do so. They'll kind of give us a usual reminder once a year, sometimes twice a year, kind of where we're at. Generally speaking, they need to have been held for several years before it makes some sense to do that refunding. Since the bonds on the field house auditorium have already been refunded, most likely there won't be another opportunity to refund those. However, they'll keep an eye on the LTFM capital facilities bonds is, there will be an opportunity for that coming up. It's just a matter of if it's cost-effective to do so. And if it isn't, if it's something that we can do to help not only lower the debt for the school district, but help the taxpayers out, we certainly do so.
We leave it up to elders to step in there and say it's, it's a smart idea to be looking at it right now.
Yeah, they've got a very good handle on the bond rates and the, the cost of issuance of doing such and how that'll affect our buyback or payback on that. And if we can either shorten term or reduce payment, and it makes sense, we certainly do so.
Questions for Josh? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the finance report as, as shown.
I'll make a motion to approve. It's Brenda.
Brenda, on the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second, it's Bill.
Bill on the second. Other discussion? Okay, a yes vote would be to approve the finance report. Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob, yes, that passes by a 5-0 vote. Mr. Sampson, on the top of our agenda, there was, it shows superintendent's report. It's kind of out of, out of line, if you will. So was there something that you, you were going to present to us? Or should this be down here after the consent agenda?
I just have the COVID-19 committee update.
Okay.
That we added to the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, you're right, it's kind of a little bit out of sync here, but that was really the only thing. And then the other items are just my thoughts on each of the new agenda items.
Sure. Next, we have the consent agenda, items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any single item, it can be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. Jeff, you like to usually acknowledge acceptance of gifts?
Yes, and I'll read through them real quick and thank the donors for their generous donations during this past month. So for 3804, we have an anonymous donation for a teacher classroom and laminating pouches. We also have another $38.04 donation by Bonnie Showquest for teacher classroom and laminating pouches. We have a $10,000 donation from United Way Toward Technology. We have $6,830 from the Blandon Foundation for Technology. $700 donation from Invenergy for Food Service Department. $2,000 donation for VFW for Cannon Falls High School football equipment and a $2,000 donation by the Cannon Falls Dance Parent Association for coaches' salary. Again, thank you for your generous donations to the district.
Okay. If you wish, just please take a moment to look at the minutes from the past meeting and see if there's anything that you would either dispute or want to correct for any reason. Otherwise, once you've looked this over, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve. This is Anna.
Anna, thank you.
I'll second Katie.
Seconded by Katie. Anybody else want to deal with anything on the consent agenda? Or further discussion? Okay, a, a yes vote would approve the consent, consent agenda as shown. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Yes, that passes by a 5-0 vote, thank you. Next page, we have nothing under old business. Under new business, consideration to approve the resolution authorizing issuance of certificates of election and directing the school district clerk to perform other election-related duties. A mouthful. Jeff, is it possible you could help us with that? What, what are we looking for specifically?
Yes, this is the actual resolution to authorize the certificates of election. And so Katie, as the clerk, would need to read off the resolution and certify the election results that the board canvassed at its last meeting.
Okay, Katie, I think you're up.
Do I, do I read one through four?
Katie, I think you can just go down to the, on the first page there.
Yep.
At least the result of the, the three that were, or the three that were.
I just have to read through our names?
And then that next paragraph down.
After, yep.
Okay, perfect. All right. Resolution authorizing issuance of certificates of election and directing the school district clerk to perform other election-related duties. Whereas the board has canvassed the general election for school board members held in conjunction with the state and general election on November 3rd, 2020. Now therefore, be it resolved by the school board of independent school district number 252, state of Minnesota as follows. The chair and clerk are hereby authorized to execute certificates of election on behalf of the school board of independent school district number 252 to the following candidates. Rebecca Piney, Bob Britnall, Katie Lochner, who have received a sufficient, sufficiently large number of votes to be elected to fill vacancies on the board caused by expiration of term on the first day of Monday in January next following the election. Based on the result of the canvass.
Okay, so we'd be looking for a motion to approve that resolution as read.
I'll move to approve.
Bill on?
I'll second, this is Anna.
Anna on the second. Any other discussion? This requires a roll call vote, so I will leave it up to the clerk.
All right, Bob?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Anna? Yes. Bill?
Yes.
Katie, yes.
Thank you, that passes by a 5-0 vote. Consideration to approve the 21, 22, 22, 23 calendars.
The year again, to approve our next two calendars for the school district. We have met with our meet and confer committee, sorry, meet and confer committee. I can't get that out of my mouth. And we have settled on recommending the 2021, 2022 calendar and the 2022 and 2023 calendars for the board to consider and to hopefully approve.
Well, we've been in the past always approved a two-year calendar. And I don't know if that's standard operating procedure, but it's been our procedure for a number of years. Jeff, what would you say would be the, the distinct differences between one year to the next?
One, the biggest distinction would be for the spring break happening in 21, 22 over not having a spring break in 22, 23 is probably the biggest distinction.
And that's what we've done in the past. It's kind of an every other year spring break, isn't it?
Yep.
And I'm, I'm guessing that the, the early releases on Friday is reflect a move for the PLC to Fridays, like we're doing now, even though they are on Wednesdays before?
Yeah, yep. We feel that would be a better move for, for parents.
Yep, I agree.
Any que, any other questions for Jeff or for anyone on the, on the calendars? If not, I would look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve, I'm second.
We'll give it to Bill, I think he beat you and we'll get Brenda on the second. So a yes vote would be the approval of the calendar for the next two upcoming years. Bill?
Yes.
Katie? Katie?
Sorry, yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob, yes, that passes by a 5-0 vote.
Hey, Bob, we have to go back after this calendar approval and the directing the school district clerk to perform other election-related duties. The devil's in the details on that one. We have to go through and have the certificates of election also. Sorry for the oversight on that. So if we go back to this resolution, we did the resolution to certify the certificates. But we also need to do certificate of election and the swearing in for each of the candidates.
So we have to individually swear in each candidate and?
Yep.
Okay, so the clerk is in to read the certificate of election for Rebecca and Bob. And then the vice chair would read it for Katie. Does that sound right? Lori, are you, are you there?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So we need to, I guess we need to amend that or else we can just add the certificate of election in a separate motion and be just fine. So the certificate of election for your term for each of our candidates. Katie, are you prepared to read those?
I don't have those printed, but I can read on the screen here.
I can scroll back up, I believe all three of the certificates of election are the same. Oh, no, Katie Lochner, sorry.
Yeah, they have different names.
There we go.
So then would we be required to read all three?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, ma'am.
All right. Certificate of election full for your term. This is to certify as follows. The school board of independent school district number 252 on November 12th, 2020 canvassed the general election of the school board members held on November 3rd, 2020. Rebecca Piney received the largest number of votes cast for the office of school board and member of independent school district number 252 for a full four-year term. There are three full four-year term vacancies on the board caused by expiration on the term of the first Monday in January next following the election. Therefore, Rebecca Piney is elected to the office of school board member of the independent school district number 252 for a full four-year term beginning on the first Monday in January 2021 and expiring on the first Monday in January 2025.
So we need to vote on each one? Lori?
No, there's no vote. This is just issuing it to Rebecca.
Yeah.
And then.
Okay.
You need to have each of us, each of them take the official oath eventually.
Yeah, that'll be at a Monday or our January meeting, I would expect, huh?
It's going to follow this and then we'll do a ceremonial type oath of office and acceptance in January.
Okay.
This is to certify as follows, the school board of independent, do I read them all again? Since they're all the same?
Yes.
Okay, the school board, it's so wordy. The school board of independent school district number 252 on November 12th. The school board of independent school district number 252 on November 12, 2020 canvassed the general election of school board members held on November 3, 2020. Bob Britnall received the second largest number of votes cast for the office of school board member of independent school district number 252 for a full four-year term. There are three full four-year term vacancies on the board caused by expiration of the term on the first Monday in January next following the election. Therefore Bob Britnall is elected to the office of school board member of independent school district number 252 for a full four-year term beginning on the first Monday in January 2021 expiring on the first Monday in January 2025. By authority of the school board of independent school district number 252 pursuant to a resolution dated November 23, 2020.
Okay, two down, one to go. I think you read your own, but then when we get into the oath that we would have.
And then I do I read this? Do I still read this one for Katie?
I don't think you necessarily need to read this one, but you will have to administer the oath on the next page.
To certify as follows. The school board of independent number school district number 252 on November 12, 2020 canvassed the general election of school board members held on November 3, 2020. Katie Lochner received the third largest number of votes cast for the office of school board member of independent school district number 252 for a full four-year term. There are three full four-year term vacancies on the board caused by expiration of the of term on the first Monday in January next following the election. Therefore Katie Lochner is elected to the office of school board member of independent school district number 252 for a full four-year term beginning on the first Monday in January 2021 and expiring on the first Monday in January 2025. By authority of the school board of independent school district number 252 pursuant to resolution dated November 23, 2020.
Okay, next we will do the acceptance of office and the oath of office. I believe that Rebecca is going to have to plug in her audio on this, correct?
Yes.
Rebecca, are you with us?
Yep.
Okay, our clerk will read that first sentence and then there's an acceptance of office and an oath of office that you should read. Okay?
Okay.
Give us that, give us that first sentence there, clerk, please.
The following acceptance and oath of office must be filed with the school district clerk within 30 days of the date of mailing or or personal service of the certificate of election.
Acceptance of office, would you read? Of course, Rebecca?
I hereby accept the office's school board member of independent school district number 252 for a term beginning on the first Monday in January 2021 and expiring on the first Monday in January 2025.
And would you read the oath?
I swear and affirm that I will support the constitution of the United States of the state of the United States and of the state and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member of independent school district number 252 to the best of my judgment and ability.
Okay, eventually you'll have to sign something in person, but congratulations to you and I'm sure the whole board is excited to have you on board.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward, the Bob Britnall acceptance of office. Katie, would you read that, please?
Following acceptance and oath of office must be filed with the school district clerk within 30 days of the date of mailing or personal service of the certificate of election. Acceptance of office?
I hereby accept the office of school board member of independent school district number 252 for a term beginning on the first Monday in January 2021 and expiring on the first Monday in January 2025.
Oath of office?
I swear and affirm that I will support the constitution of the United States and of the state and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member of independent school district 252 to the best of my judgment and ability. And then I think Brenda should read that first sentence and then after that it'll be up to Katie.
Okay, to Katie Lochner. The following acceptance and oath of office must be filed with the school district clerk within 30 days of the date of mailing or personal service of the certificate of election. Acceptance of office?
I hereby accept the office of school board member of independent school district number 252 for a term beginning on the first Monday in January 2021 and expiring on the first Monday in January 2025.
Oath of office?
I swear and affirm that I will support the constitution of the United States and of the state and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member of independent school district 252 to the best of my judgment and ability.
Okay, thanks to all. Congratulations to all. Moving down, did we get that right? Lori?
I I think we're back on track now. My apologies.
Number three, consideration to prove the resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons therefore. Jeff, do you want to tell us what that's all about?
Yes, the this is the annual resolution, basically doing what it's asking us to to have administration look into the possibility of cuts if needed and then make those recommendations to the school board. Usually in the first part of the year, late winter, early spring for you to consider if there are some. But this is a formality resolution at this point.
A procedural directive telling us, telling you that we're prepared for you to investigate potentials, huh?
Yep.
Okay, we'll need a motion in a second and then we can have a discussion if you if you so choose.
Remove, Bob.
Motion by Bill. A second.
Okay, a second.
Second by Brenda. Discussion. Okay. A yes vote would be.
Oh, no, no, I have to read it.
It's a resolution.
Yep.
Resolution.
All right. Resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons therefore. Whereas the financial condition of the school district dictates that the school board may reduce expenditures immediately and whereas there has been a reduction in student enrollment and whereas that this reduction in expenditure or decrease in student enrollment may include discontinuance of positions and discontinuance or curtailment of programs and whereas the determination may must be made as to which teachers' contracts must be terminated and not renewed and which teachers may be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits in affecting discontinuance of positions. Be it resolved by the school board of independent school district 252 as follows. That the school board hereby directs the superintendent of schools and administration to consider the discontinuance of programs or positions due to effectuate economies in the school district and reduced expenditures. And as a result of reduction in enrollment, make recommendations to the school board for the discontinuance of programs, curtailment of programs, discontinuance of positions, or curtailment of positions.
Okay.
Are you ready for a roll call or do we have discussion?
We should just check one more time to see if we have discussion. Does anyone like to speak to this at all or have any questions in regards to it?
This is just us giving them a role to look at potential reductions. It's not an advance acceptance of anything, correct?
Correct.
I was, yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to clear.
Yep. Okay, clerk?
Yep, Bob?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Katie, yes.
Thank you. That passes by a five zero vote. Katie, it's your busy night tonight, huh?
Yes.
Number four, consideration to prove the January 1, 21 till December 31, 21 resolution establishing establishing a combined polling place.
This is a yearly item that needs to be passed by school districts as other things do. This item was actually passed in January of last year, but our bond council reviewed the item and it didn't have the the specific dates attached to the resolution. So we will need to pass this resolution for this coming year for the full year of 2021. And then in January, we'll get back on cycle again for the year after that when it should be passed and we'll make sure that we have the dates in there as well. So you'll see this at this meeting and then you'll see the following year's resolution in January at the organizational meeting.
Okay, we we would need a motion to approve the resolution establishing a combined polling place.
I'll move to approve, Brenda.
Brenda? And Anna on the second?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, clerk, do your thing.
All right, well, do I read this entire sheet? Do you know, Lori?
I think we got to read through at least where they're having the combined polling places.
Yeah, do you just want me to read through that where where we list the polling place?
Yeah, I would read number two, I believe, and then call the.
Through number two, okay.
And call out the combined polling places.
The note?
Or place, yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay, got it. All right, be resolved by the school board of independent school district number 252, state of Minnesota as follows. Pursuant to Minnesota statute section 205A dash or A dot 11. The precinct and polling places for school district elections are those precincts or parts of precincts located within the boundaries of the school district which have been established by cities or towns located in whole or in part within the school district. The board hereby confirms those precincts and polling places so established by those municipalities. Pursuant to Minnesota statute section 205A dash one dot 11. The board may establish a combined polling place for several precincts for school district elections not held on the day of a statewide election. Each combined polling place must be a polling place that has been designated by a county or municipality. The following combined polling places are established to serve the precincts specified for all school districts special and general elections not held on the same day as a statewide election from January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2021. The combined bowling place polling place is the Cannon Falls City Hall, 918 River Road, Cannon Falls, Minnesota, 55009.
Okay. Yep, I think we'll need a vote on that.
All right, Bob?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
But Bill?
Yes.
And Katie, yes.
Okay, thank you. Consideration to prove the additions to the 2021 winter coaching list. Reed, would you like to speak to any of this at all?
Yeah, we had Coach Davis had asked about adding one more volunteer to his, yeah, stop right there, please, stop. Thank you. Jim Swigum to his coaching staff and we were able to approve Sean Blake Wingfield, who's a current para in our in our building as the eighth grade coach after we'd already offered Ellery Ackerman, another one of our teachers and I believe she's one of our junior high volleyball coaches as well. That position as well. So everything is filled. Now we're just waiting for when we get to play.
Um, would you would you tell us one more time the eighth grade girls coach that it was?
Sean, Sean Wingfield, he's one of our sped paras.
Okay.
Yeah. Been one of my game workers that is willing to do anything every night. So if you've been to any of our activities or noticed anything on the live stream, you you for sure seen him. So I jokingly told him when he was thinking about applying that he could not apply because those game workers are valuable, but he's a he's a great guy and he'll do he'll do a great job on Coach Charles's staff for sure.
Okay, we will need a motion in a second for the completion of the winter coaching list.
Don't move.
By Bill, move by Bill. Second.
I'll second Katie.
Katie on the second. Other discussion. A yes vote would be for the approval of the final winter coaching list. Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Yes.
Bob, yes, that passes by a five zero vote. Last item on our agenda is a discussion item that deals with the COVID advisory team and their past meeting, I would guess. Jeff?
Uh, yes, thank you. I've been asked to give regular updates and we've had more movement on COVID advisory committee lately, obviously, with the infection rates going up within our county. As of last Thursday, that was the last in-person instruction day that the committee has recommended. And we are moving toward distance learning. Our staff were in today for some staff development. They will be in tomorrow for staff development and then we will start official distance learning on November 30 through January 8th, pending looking at data along the way, both for county data and and in our building data, we will continue to track as many cases as we can within our staff and with our students to make sure that we stay on top of the data as we move through distance learning during that time. As most of you have heard also, the Minnesota State High School League has come out and put a pause on activities as well through December 18. And so really that's kind of the where we're at in a nutshell at this time, especially with the case rates climbing exponentially. Seems like on a daily basis, not only in the county, but also throughout the state. We're heading into a holiday busy time for families and hopefully we are smart about what we are doing during that time, not only over Thanksgiving, but also over the Christmas holidays as well. It's important to have people understand that we need the case rates to go down and the infection rates to go down before we can come back to in-person learning. Because at this point, it's it's not safe. We actually got out at a pretty good time, I think, because our our cases both in staff and in students started to climb over the weekend. So I think it was the right call at that time. And we look forward to getting back to in-person learning as soon as we can. Safely do it.
When we when we hear from the governor and we hear from the high school league, the Department of Education, are all these entities always on the same page? Or do you get? Well, I I there's a method to that. I just, it seems like we get mixed messages between some of these entities, I guess.
Um, are they on the same page? Not always, no. Um, I think we get conflicting statements a lot from MDH, from MDE, which is frustrating at my level and I can only imagine what it's like hearing this on the outside, looking in about, you know, why is it this way or why is it that way in other school districts? The intent that the governor had initially was to do this regionally and more specifically county by county. And sometimes that doesn't always remain consistent as each individual school district has things happening within their own buildings, which precipitates some different decisions to be made as well. And so I think the messaging is getting more consistent because we've been having better meetings and within schools within our own county has made statements with their epidemiologist and GCU County Public Health to make sure that we're getting consistent messaging. And what that is, knowing full well that each individual school district is different upon itself as well. If that makes sense.
Well, actually, none of it makes sense to us as as individuals. Also, there's there's always this ground swell of frustration by parents of ath- Also, there's, there's always this groundswell of frustration by parents of athletes, and are we absolutely following, is it a directive from the governor, or a recommendation from the governor, that, that athletics cease happening? I kind of wonder that.
At this point, it's a directive that there is a pause put on in-person activities through December 18th. I don't know what they're going to do on December 18th, your guess is as good as mine, you know? We were directed to, to go into distance learning as a district after our consultation, and that I went round and round to make sure that I get, I get the right wording coming from our epidemiologist, um, and I took that back to our COVID Advisory Committee. And so, um, yeah, wording says a lot in a lot of these meetings between recommendations and requirements, because there are some districts that are being recommended to do one thing or another, and then some districts are required to move into that piece of it.
Other questions for Jeff?
Oh, Jeff, it's Bill, I, I just think it's important to, to note that, uh, I think that the school has done a very good job of mitigating COVID within the school, and the numbers that we've seen have been pretty minimal versus the community, and, uh, the community really has to step up in, in order for us to get back to school, uh, in-person learning. And so, you know, the five percent was a number that the, the, you know, MDH put out, we're well over that, and as the committee's looking at it, we're, we're going to have to see some drops before we can, can get back to school. You know, the strategy coming out of the committee was getting through the holidays, and, and, you know, I think that it fell really well as far as how we were eking out those last couple, couple days and, and weeks, um, of keeping the kids in school. So, um, I gotta hand it to the, the administrators and the teachers, um, for a job well done as far as we've gotten so far.
I would echo that, uh, with the, the staff that we have working for us did a great job with the mitigation strategies to, to help keep us in as long as we were able to.
One other comment, I guess, um, you know, when you see it on the news, I think, um, it kind of comes across that it's happening a lot in the schools, and, and that that's not really the case. I think, I wish they would come out and say that it's more of the community, and that probably the biggest struggle, um, is the ability to run the school with administrators and teachers, if we're getting a community-wide struggle with the virus, because once we, we can't have staff, that's going to be the, the biggest, biggest issue that we have.
And I would, I would echo that, is that we were really close to shutting down just because of staffing concerns, more than students having the virus itself, it was more of a, um, staffing concerns and being able to carry on teaching in person.
Yeah, because the pure numbers, you know, you, you get a handful of, of teachers that are either sick or exposed, and it's the exposing that is probably the biggest concern, because you're having to pull them out, and it's not reported that way, and that's frustrating in my eyes, so.
Yeah, it's not that we had a large number at the time when we made the decision, we didn't have a large number of staff that had actually contracted the virus, it was more of the quarantine piece that was, that was hurting us as well, or beginning to hurt us.
Other comments?
I have a, I have a, go ahead, Katie, go ahead. Um, I was just wondering about the childcare, like, how's that going? And, um, the, I noticed this time, it specifically said that we're only offering childcare to parents that are both tier one workers. Is that different than the spring then, or is it, um, is there a reason for that? Or, or do you have too many kids otherwise? Or I'm just curious that, how that's going?
We just...
That was my, that was my question as well, so.
We just set our staffing for the emergency care to start up again today, and this past spring, um, initially, uh, the governor's executive orders called for only one parent needing to be an emergency worker, and then part of, part of the way through the spring, the governor changed that to two parents having to become, or having to be, uh, emergency workers. At the time in the spring, we decided not to kick anybody out, because we had the staffing to make that happen and be flexible with families. Coming into this year, uh, we didn't have the staffing we felt necessary until we figured out how many kids for sure, we had, we had two parents, uh, come in as emergency workers. If we find enough staff currently, which we haven't yet, today, we found enough to staff what we need for the two-parent emergency care, or the full household is probably a better way, because sometimes there's only one parent, and that person's an emergency worker.
Right, right.
Yeah, and so, um, we are trying as hard as we can to get enough staffing to even open it up even more, but there's some challenges that come with that, because we are running our preschool, uh, with our teachers and the pares in that program, and that helped out a lot this past spring, in doing...
Gotcha.
So, i- if we get to a point where, um, depending on where our staffing goes for that program, just because we have a staff now doesn't mean that we will have a staff next week, uh, due to people either being quarantined or contracting COVID. And we'll make decisions as we go along. So at this point, we're going to keep with the two-parent, uh, emergency worker.
Okay.
Anna, you had a question, or was that, was that it?
Yeah, my, my question was the same as Katie's, and I guess just to, you know, follow up, there are parents that have questions about whether or not there's potential for them to have care. Who's the best person for them to contact?
I'd have Erica Paulson.
Okay. Okay.
She is our boots-on-the-ground expert, and she has a lot of support behind her, but she would be a good first initial contact.
Okay.
Okay, anything else for Jeff on the COVID advisory team? Thank you for bringing us up to date on that.
Yep.
So that ends our meeting. The next school board meeting will be at 6:00 PM, December 21. That's our regular meeting, and, uh, audit presentation, world's best workforce possibly, as required by MDE, and after that, the January 11th meeting. So if anybody has anything that they need to bring forth for the district, any questions or concerns, they'd like to have anything on the agenda, please let Lori or Jeff know, and we can see to it that we get it on there.
We should have our survey results also back by then, we've had pretty good numbers of respondents, um, at this point, according to the staff from school perception, so hopefully that continues.
Good. Okay, and a side note, I, I wish everybody has a great and safe holiday, this is, uh, so much different than we've went through in the past for all families, but, uh, I hope you have a wonderful day. Staff?
Me too.
I know you're listening. Have a very happy Thanksgiving.
All right, thank you all.
Now, I would look for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting, Brenda.
Brenda on the motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second, this is Anna.
Anna wins that. Any other discussion? All in favor of adjournment, Bob, yes, Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
That passes by a five zero vote, we are officially adjourned, thank you for coming.